Yeah.
Alright, it's hard to say.
It's a no-no, oh my god. Except for the air holes or the other.
Because those are allowed.
Yeah. But this happens before we have a lot, well uncommon, we have a lot of somebody else. Right.
How's it going, Peter?
I've been better. It's a long story.
Oh, no. Okay, I think we're out here. I'll probably need to order some regular meeting. We have one item on the agenda tonight and could I ask you to pronounce your last name? I don't want to mess it up.
It's Triarcus.
Triarcus, thank you. So, we have an application from Mr. Triarcus having to do with the non-conforming camp. And the request is to allow a foundation, foundation construction under that non-conforming camp. There were a couple of other elements to the application. And as I looked at it, some of it is not completely clear to me, so we will ask you in a minute to come up and present your application. We may have some questions for the board. But the planning board members, this is a piece that is governed by the, by Article three, which is non-conformance. And specifically, what we're looking at is the section 4C, which is foundations, that talks about a new foundation beneath an existing non-conformant structure. The application states that they're not requesting an expansion of the cottage. But I do have some questions around that, because you can get into that in a few minutes. Because there is also a proposal that has to do with an existing shed, and as I understand it, there's a new shed proposed as well. And it may be that section 4I is involved, but we'll, we'll, we'll be up about a minute. So accessory structures are specifically addressed in a non-conforming structure. So and finally, before we get into the details of the application, this is one of those where section 4C requires that the planning board make a determination that the setback requirements are met to the greatest practical extent. So we will need to talk about that and whether or not that standard has any net support in the application. So, Richa, if you'd like to come up?
Will do, thanks.
To Triarcus and present your application.
I have some handouts that you need to read, especially for things, some of the targets that you just discussed. And I thought I'd just introduce you to the project a little bit. All this is in, mostly this is the information that Chip would begin to do. Chip does discuss the structures and the most practically usable things as well.
Those online, I did send out this full package. You just got handed out here. And this afternoon, I also sent out some pictures. So we have everything we have.
Well, good evening. So, nice to meet all of you. I've been coming to Leefield, I think, since I was eight or nine years old. And so it's a pleasure to be here at my first planning board meeting. It's a pleasure to talk to you. I would like to, this afternoon and this evening, just kind of share with you what our project is. And then answer your any direct questions and understand what next steps might be after we're here today. But the camp that we're talking about was actually built in 1900. It was part of, some of you that have been here for a while, Fred Bellis actually owned these camps. It's part of the Pine Rest Cottage Association. And my, my family bought the camp in 1972. And so we're now part of the Pine Rest Association. There's 13 camps. They're all part of an association where we share a leach field, common water system, pumps and things like that. So so we all have been part of that for quite a while. Our project itself is to repair and replace some aging aspects of the camp. And to do some of that, we really do need to to buffer up the camp itself. I'll show, I have pictures here that'll show you the camp is literally resting on the ground. More than tiny stone ones that are been holding it up since 1900. So the idea is to just put a foundation in, you know, not a full foundation, just new cement and gravel footings to, to kind of stabilize it and get to level the house up. For the past few months, I've had a pleasure to meet with Chip quite a few times, actually. We've gained familiarity with the regulations, section four. Chip and I talked about a lot of different options in terms of what may or may not be appropriate for our land. And so we've reviewed the property for, for what can and can't be done. And so hopefully, everything that we're discussing today does align with your core requirements. As you mentioned, there is no request for additional square footage. We understand that that's not appropriate. And we did discuss non-conformity and also using the land to its best possible extent as well. So I think I'm able to answer your questions. I'm not sure how much detail you want to get into this, or should I just address your two questions directly? What's the best process?
First, what word are we not going to use and we're going to replace it? Shed?
Correct.
Bump out.
Yeah. So what you have in front of you is a pack of everything that that Chip sent down. But I, I kind of renumbered them a little bit in the upper right-hand corner. So if I ask you to reference pages, we can do it that way. So you'll see, you know, my handwritten 1, 2, 3, 4. But why don't we talk about the shed and rename that to a bump out? And that's on page 17 and 18. So page 17 is a picture of the current layout of the, of the camp itself. The water is down on the porch side. So if you're looking at the picture, the water is on the porch side of the building. What we have today is, if you're taking a look at the picture, on the left-hand side of the page, we have something called a shed. Chip's, I think Chip's more appropriate. This is the bump out. It's not a separate standalone shed. It's a three-by-eight extension of the camp where the water heater is stored today.
And so it's part of?
It's absolutely part of the house. It's got the same roof structure as other parts of the house. And so it's not separate, freestanding whatsoever. The request is to simply take that square footage, 24 square feet, and push it back to be even with the entry there, the entry's six by eight, and move it back to be just back, to be aligned with, the kitchen is there now, so align it more with the entryway. And potentially put in a small half bath, and it would probably keep the water heater in there as well. So reduce the level of non-conformity to the water by moving it back eight feet. And we're not, we're not going to move the, we won't have any plans to go any larger than the 24 feet for that.
The initial submission that you made also talks about trying to definitely screen for, so that's part of the plan.
Correct.
And the final rule that says that we can patch shed behind the house. So that's part of the plan.
Ideally, that would be part of the plan to move it back. I could show you the dimensions of the, of the lot, because I think that addresses the other question that you have, what, hey, do we consider other places where the shed, could we, could we move the house back? Can we relocate the structure itself? Think, like, show you what's happening with the land itself. You'll understand why the shed makes sense and why I think it does conform with the rules.
And I, I do think that more important is, is also that the non-conforming structure section requires, under most circumstances, that applications demonstrate that the structure has been located to meet setbacks to the greatest practical extent. And that, that is, that includes a situation where you're putting a foundation under an existing non-conforming structure.
Yes.
So one of the primary findings of the planning board needs to make is that it says, "The new, the structure and new foundation shall be placed such that the setback requirements are met to the greatest practical extent."
Yes.
So in some cases, when a camp or a building is, is moved or a foundation placed, and there is opportunities to relocate it to some extent, to make it much more conformant.
Right.
So what I didn't see in the application was anything that supports the argument that it can't be moved essentially. So we would like to hear about that and what the opportunity is for the application.
Right. We, we actually discussed, Chip and I, and Lori took quite a lot. Page 22 of my handwritten notes would be the best, best way to do that, I think. And this is just a, this shaded area is, is our lot. And so you see, it's a really interesting one. It's a Z, it's kind of a Z-shaped lot, as you can see. We, we do have a lot of waterfront, 120 feet of waterfront, but then the, then the property narrows drastically. So where the back of the house is there, if I go back 100, roughly 100 feet, the width of the lot is 55 feet, 50 to 60, no more than 55 feet. And so yet the possibility to move the house back 100 feet and to rebuild the house as an existing structure, even a thousand-square-foot home, I would not have the buffer on either side of the 20 feet on either side as required by section 4C.
But you don't have that for our land either?
No, but that house has been there. The current structure has been where it is. I haven't changed the current structure.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
And so with that, because Chip and I did look at this, we said, you know, what if we didn't move it back 100 feet? There's just nowhere to put it. And then the driveway, there's an arrow up there, that's a, a shared driveway with my neighbors. Because the association, we share roadways and everything else. And so there's no room even back. Even that's not enough space. You know, it's like 65 feet wide. So not, nowhere near wide enough to put a new structure.
Needs to go well.
Don't have a well. We have a lake. We have a septic. The septic would be, you're going to see the septic on page 17, but we don't have a well. We need lake water. We have pumps that feed the, of the 13 associations. We have a septic tank, and then we had a sheer, we had a sheer leach field. Page 17 and 18 show you where our septic tank is. We were actually one of the first ones to put the new 1,000 gallon in and replace the old existing barrels that were there.
So somewhere on the larger property versus a leach field?
On the larger property, on the association property, correct.
Define it by maybe a jet. This happened in my first years. Charlie was one of the first, and then two others came in with failed, PD shot up drums that were their septic tanks. And I got the whole place to look at. Recently, I had 12 places that had to be redone. What they have there are individual septic tanks and pump stations. And all the lines are above ground, so it can de-frost, de-ice during the winter. So imagine, if you will, each place has a septic tank, pump station, pumps up to the road where there's a community.
So it's actually, it's actually a leach field, correct. We test that regularly to make sure it's viable. But the usage is only, these camps are not ever winterized. The camps are only used roughly, you know, late spring to the fall, so April, end of April to the middle of October. They're very rarely used, and so the leach field itself has survived and continues to be viable. I'm sorry, Jack, can I continue?
I was just wondering where the septic tank is. Were able to move the house back, the septic tank being in the way?
Yes, it was still there, it would still be in the way. Page 17 and 18 have septic, rough, rough locations. Tell me about that. Looking at page 17. Yeah. Oh, it's on the porch side. Can I, okay if I, I'll show you here. So the lake is, oh, yeah, so the lake is here. The lake is here. Does that address it, Paul? Does that kind of clear up why we've decided that the best thing for us to do is to kind of revitalize the existing structure, live with the square footage, try to make it as viable as we can for the future? You know, for my kids and my grandson.
If, if helps, I would like to hear a little more about, you know, as I mentioned before, this, this piece and the non-conforming structure, structure section of the ordinance. When it's speaking about foundations, it, it does require the demonstration that if you're going to put a foundation under an existing non-conforming structure, that you demonstrate that that structure can't be relocated further from, from the lake, basically. It's the most important setback. Side setbacks certainly are important, but it's obvious that that wouldn't change much. You know, even if you moved the camp back, you would still have, you wouldn't be able to meet side setbacks.
Correct.
But there is, there is still the high-water mark setback, the lake setback. And so I would like to hear a little bit more about why it's not possible when, when the camp is raised with foundation and couldn't be moved back further from the lake. I understand it can't go 100 feet because the lot is deep enough. But can it not be moved back?
I don't, I mean, it would be a massive construction project. If it's on a hill, it's pretty the house itself is on a fairly level piece of land, but behind it is a hill, so that whole hill would have to be moved. There are trees that are there now. Septic tank, as we've mentioned, is upstairs at the end in the back, it's on the left-hand side. So moving it back at all, it rests solely on the septic tank. If we moved it back even 15, 20 feet, it would be sitting on the septic tank. And so the septic tank itself would also have to be moved. And my neighbors would likely have to be moved too, because they're literally abutting each other. Because there's just no, no square, no side, side property. So I would, I would think perhaps both septic tanks would also have to be moved as well.
That's the, you know, that's the type of supporting information that's important for this kind of application.
Okay.
And that's what I was looking for, my neighbors doing my.
Okay, thank you.
I.
Yeah, yeah.
I have pictures. You can see kind of why, if you go to the back, you see four or five shots of how it's actually sitting on the land today. And why we're trying to, literally no doors closed or anything. It shifts every time we move it. There was also a question about erosion. So I wanted to show you that our land is really well protected at the lake level. We have good shrubbery that we maintain and protect as well to make sure that no future construction would alter the lake shore as well. You can see the corners of the house, literally, this has been, it just sinks and moves continuously.
Are you putting the whole family?
No, we're just putting foot, footings, you know, cement.
What's the slip?
Just a cement post. Yeah. And with gravel, gravel seats and, you know, the cement post. So not a full, not a full foundation whatsoever. Yeah, because we need to, the way the houses were made, as Chip mentioned, we're all connected by above-ground pipes. So everything has to be free. You can't put in a foundation in these places because we have to be able to access all the pipes that go to all the different camps.
Tell me about this shed, this attached shed that you were handling.
Don't, we don't know that yet. I don't even sure it was going to get approved, but it would be small. It would be, at the most, three by eight or three by 10, just small. You know, again, just, it would just be able to keep my water in the winter and, you know, some tools and some rigs.
Where would you locate it?
I'd probably locate it, you know, right, right around the curve of this in page 22. Right kind of the bend of the, of the land, probably about as good a place as any. And it would probably be a vertical to protect and the side dimensions as well. It would be along, you know, rather than have the shed be horizontal to the house, it would be perpendicular to the house.
Where's the driveway in relation?
The driveway is on page 22. You can see the dotted lines. I have a little arrow. That's the driveway on page 22. And it connects to my neighbor's house as well. My neighbors on both sides.
Is there a formal drive?
Yeah, it's just a, it's just a dirt access road. And then the way that the, the bylaws are written, we all have access to all the shared, shared roads. There's, you know, people have access to get across people's property if needed to be, also to be able to use the roads and drive in, drive out.
Where do you park?
I park right behind the house, like, right.
So you can drive from that?
I can.
Part of lockdown to the house?
It's just on my thunder, yeah. No, no formal driveway or pavement. And none of that is, you can see in pictures of the, it's all kind of needles and trees and roads.
So you said there was a substantial slope up here, or you can still drive that?
It, yeah, it flattens, and then it slopes, and then flattens again. So we park in a fairly flat piece of land.
So there are arches in that area?
We're in part, we're parked between them.
Do you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, when I first looked, I thought, this is so harsh.
Yeah. Yeah, this would just slop you. Yeah, it's, it never ends. It rains five years all day long.
So, if you there are some standards that are required with regard to accessory structures, what the shed would be.
Yeah.
And so I think if you want to improve the shed, the proposal, that's part of what we should be making a decision on. You will need to know the location and size of it.
Okay.
And I would suggest that you look at Article three, section four, I. Article three, four. And those are the standards for sheds.
Okay.
So the shed doesn't count as a square area?
No.
As long as it's under.
As long as it's conforming to our line.
How did you measure the 4D?
I would date measure as best I could. Yeah, and I used a laser gun as well. I measured it. It was a high-water mark too, by the way. We did, I measured it in the spring, which is probably the highest water mark that we I've been measured like this week, where the water's down substantially. That was measured back in April, where the water was at its peak.
I think I would, I would suggest, because it is important to your application, that I'd like to see some narrative about the greatest practical sense in those factors that you were talking about that would include you from moving the camp back to, to, to have a new setup. I think all of those things that you mentioned, you know, could be, could be relevant factors.
Okay.
On the septic tank, large trees, slope. All of those things that we were talking about, but I wanted to highlight. I asked for that because it is a central part. I probably need to decide with these in text of application.
There are things that, not that I got so many of them, it's kind of works, but there's no, we usually have a copy of rights to have.
Oh, I thought we had a copy of taxes prepared, so I'm sorry you don't have it. Yeah. Isn't the last page that? Yeah, the last page of the package is really the tax. And yes, I'm paying taxes. I haven't.
I have to, yeah.
I have some reference.
And I haven't paid dumb bills. And my votes are registered.
That's right. I can test all that.
Right.
Are there any, how is located the function?
I'm sorry?
Oh, that's the last.
No, there's nothing across, nothing directly across from me. It's actually my neighbor's land directly across from me. His land cuts across.
You did just cite, you're doing under standard.
It's terribly, I mean, it, it's deceiving because of the waterfront, the way it bends, but once you get to like the location of the house, it's, it's a narrow lot. And it just, I think they really put it 100 years ago, it was probably the most optimal spot for it, given where it was.
So do you have any, any questions about that standard that I keep asking questions about?
I, I don't know it offhand, so I'll have to read it and understand the standard. But I mean, I did understand the 20 feet. I did understand the setback of 100, you know, going back 100. Chip and I talked, if I didn't want to replace that, we even talked, well, maybe we, you know, tear it down and rebuild it, but then I think I was limited to 1,000 square feet. Even, we did rebuild it, but even then, I'm within all the different variances and couldn't, couldn't rebuild even if we wanted to in the existing space. So I tried to understand.
And what, what, what the standard says essentially is there are a number of setbacks that are relevant each non-conforming property. The the setback from the high-water mark, the ideal setback is 20 feet from the sidelines, 20 feet from the well.
Right.
And obviously, because, you know, it's an older cottage and it doesn't need those setbacks. This standard says that as part of the review that we do for putting new supports, foundation under that existing cottage, we need to be able to determine that you've gone through that exercise of trying to meet the setbacks to the greatest practical extent. So if it was possible, if there was nothing behind the cottage and the lake, you know, the trees, the septic. It theoretically would be a situation where we would ask that the cottage be in foundation. And we've had, you know, a number of projects where people have been proposing just that, to back it to bring in the foundation. And it may not be possible in a lot of situations. It may well be one of them. But we still need to take a finding about that. And so whatever information we put together about why is this possible.
Is there someone here that I don't like?
Yeah, potentially as part of it, we may lose, but the if you do take a site visit, you'll see that because of the way it's been managed and built over the years, there's just terrible deterioration of the structures. And so, yeah, we probably want to take some of the roofs off and raise it potentially up one to two feet. Would still keep us under, I believe, 25-foot variance that we need to be. I think it's 18'4" now, is how high the roof starts. So we'll be, we'll be very careful about making sure that we don't go over the Uh, I think it's eighteen-four now, it's how high the roof starts, so we'll be, we'll be very careful about making sure that we don't go over the.
Any other questions?
I was just gonna ask, um, I don't see that this new accessory.
Yeah, it's, it's not there and I just asked him to.
The, the shed itself, the new sheds.
Yeah, I mean, I think you should, I think you should include it now.
I have it in the narrative.
I think you should include it in the sort of documents.
Okay.
And there's, there's mention of it, I saw that.
We need to be very specific because if, we, we would have to, i- if relevant to the greatest practical extent discussion.
Okay.
It needs to be included in that way, because you don't want to go through this whole process and come back.
Okay. And, and, and what, what information do you need, like the side, potential location where I would put it? With the potential sides and that may be, now it may or may not conform to the size, is that, that kind of thing?
Location and size and, uh, refer to that section on, because there are some standards.
Okay.
You are allowed to do it, but it's, has very specific. Which are, of course, which are made for certain, they could do it. So you should, you should put it in now, since I think it's part of the process.
Okay. Shed, perfect. I, I just need to put a few tools and rakes and stuff. We can certainly do it now, uh, that'd be perfect, so eight feet and that's, that's great, I can, I can certainly, so way describe why we can't move it, I can also entertain where we might push it in the same narrative.
Yeah, um, part of that, supplemental part of that.
Part of that, part of the narrative, yeah.
And, yeah, if you could, uh, you were given us a like a little site map, um, uh, that shows the lake and so forth, if you could locate you know, on this new one, where you'd like to put the shed, that would be helpful.
Like where I would put the shed. We'll do, I think that'd be the interesting.
Also just, I can make a suggestion, also showing the, sort of existences of all instructions.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't sure we needed that today, but I have that, I can certainly add that.
So you promised us some of that?
Yeah.
How far you can drive the driveway.
Okay.
Show this to me.
And is that measurement from the driveway to the back of the house? Is that, that measure, what measure, what is that measurement that you would like?
I think, uh, at minimum, I would suggest the line lines, right? So from the side and the road, because that's part of the standard.
Okay.
How far from the road is, exactly where the road is.
Yeah, there's no road.
Driveway.
So I think the only, um, I believe the, the distance from the cottage to the lake, which is forty-eight.
Forty-eight, yeah.
And then yet, there's an error that says eighty.
I believe it's eighty, yeah, I can.
Drive way, but those are really the only, um, measures, you know, measurements that were provided. And some maybe else you have to give us a better sense of.
And is E to the back of the structure or?
To the back of the structure. Yeah.
So you're going to need to guide the side center.
Yeah, the sides are there, yeah.
But I don't show you how wide it is from property to property, so you can get a sense for that, right? I can, I have those.
Other questions, issues?
I'll put some trees, I'll show you where some trees are as well.
Uh, that would be helpful in the part of the narrative about moving back. That's one of the limiting factors with the importance.
I don't have any questions right now.
Thank you.
And I don't either.
I did a question, the butters, have they not been notified yet? Is that what, I think that's what you, is that what you just said, the butters?
I would be doing that.
You'll do that, okay.
That's part of our regular, regular.
Okay, I didn't know if they had already been.
Peter?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
So if I may, my question inside, I'll come back with, we have like a redrawing on page twenty-two. What's already there, but some of the new situational discussions, subject to section out, right? And address whatever.
Well, I, I will split the shed.
Yeah.
And then, um, actually, you might want to do, um, C is the foundations piece.
Okay.
And part of what it references is meeting setbacks to the greatest practical extent. Section E is about that greatest practical extent test.
Okay.
Uh, there's a lot of verbiage there and much of that might not be relevant to your situation, but you, you know, you might find it helpful to read it. And, um, essentially what it's looking for is, um, those things that we, those types of things.
Okay.
We're talking about that might present an impediment to moving back further, more achieving.
And so, so I plan, I believe your next meeting is September twenty-third, so I plan on attending that and presenting this information.
Yeah, um, it likely will be September twenty-third, that would be our next regular scheduled meeting. You know, issue that might come up.
Yeah.
So, uh, Chip can be in touch with you.
Okay.
Typically, what we will do is, uh, schedule a site visit for a short time before the meeting, so. Probably, uh, once you push it five thirty.
Ten minutes from there.
Or do you want to make it right at five thirty or five forty-five?
Five thirty-five.
I'm wondering what's going to be our problem issue for us?
No, no, we can, we can, we can talk like that, you can park in the road. You'll see, we should be fine.
Okay, well, technically, we might be planning on five forty-five on September for site visit.
Okay.
And then, um,
I can present.
Follow and repeat the recommendation and, you know, there will be a public hearing and the board discuss the application.
Okay. And I assume I can attend your site visit?
Oh, yes, please.
Hold on, which way should I come into your cottage?
Through the back, not through the water side, so directly behind the, the bathroom in the entrance way.
But no, I'm, I'm talking about the road, actually, how do you get to your cottage?
Oh, generally, where is it?
You mean, what, what road is?
Pine Res.
It's Pine Res Cottage Road, it's off South Road, right? Yeah, it's off, it's the first, if you're coming from here, it's the first, right, off South Road. Uh, Pine Res Cottage Road, it's roughly three quarters of a mile to a mile dirt road down to the lake. And the, it's, it's, so the situation kind of spreads out from there. We're straight down, when you found us, by the way, just head straight down. Uh, will be the beige, but it's a beige cottage, I'll be there for sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks, appreciate your time. Great, thank you very much.
I had made, um, a one-word suggestion to Angelica. Nothing substantive. Look, there was a word missing from the original draft.
I saw that.
Yeah.
Any other edits to those?
Second.
Motion for second discussion. All those in paper?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, um, I understand that was. Thank you all.
What happened when you were here?
No leadership.
Uh, the only other thing that I wanted to mention is that, um, you all receive from Eric your information about the, um, email accounts and we weren't on Lenny's. So, um, Dana had offered to provide a tutorial to planning board members upon the, uh, you know, various apps that are connected to the, the account. And use of Google Docs and so forth. And, uh, he, it's not here tonight, but, um, I told him that we would put that on the agenda for the next week. I don't know exactly what we sent him to present, but something. The, uh, the only thing that I would say about all this right now is that the primary purpose of those accounts is to ensure that all the town's business is conducted on them. So it's, um, emails concerning planning board business in the you should use your account, account rather than the person. And the purpose, uh, you know, as I understand it, is primarily to ensure that everything is in all location and it's complete. Particularly when we're talking about open access and that sort of thing. The other point that Eric made, and I really don't think this is an issue, but the other point that Eric made was that, you know, he wanted to be sure that everyone understood that the town accounts were working for, for personal purposes. And I, I think I certainly understand that intuitively, um, but it's the, the other thing. I did ask him specifically if the select board had, um, come up with a different policy around all of this. And there is not one, he said at this point, but not his own future. But, uh, it's, uh, it's a, you know, it's a little more, um, it's a bit looser, you know, in form, but it's not guided by this policy. But I think it's, you know, it's, it's pretty simple, um, essentially, it's just, it's your town.
Does it mean, I have a personally, um, what I'm going to have separate real things for the town?
Yes.
That I'm going to be able to look at?
Correct, correct, yeah, so you've got to set it up separately. And, and look at it separately. My role here.
Uh, it's one. If I may, I hate Google Docs. I'll sit right up front.
You don't have to use Google Docs.
Well, that's my point, is we, we had enough pain many times working with Apple, you know, and with Microsoft. This is going to be a bit confusing, I crazy with it, I'd ask for fishing. You can use the email systems easy, everybody has a Gmail account, that's pretty much the crux of it, but you have a new email and you use your Gmail account. In terms of Google Docs, my humble opinion, still use your Word and your Excel, PowerPoint, whatever. That can be included in on your Gmails. But that's one important thing, you're gonna go, you're gonna have, I think, struggle a little bit with Google Docs and everything else, because there's a lot of editing I guess. The other thing I want again to say is that this doesn't mean that we're gonna have communication between applicants and yourselves directly and everything, we'd still like to have applicants come in through me. Okay, and I can disseminate the information, otherwise we're gonna have them communicating directly with you.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's nothing, there's this process that in the system that suggests a process is going to change. What?
We don't have a process.
Well, we do have a process, that's some of you. Uh, I mean, that process, I mean, how information gets to the planning board and how we consider it, none of that is changing because of this new, this new system. And I did have a conversation specifically with Eric about Google Docs, because I don't quite have Google Docs either. Um, and I want to continue to use my Microsoft. And he said, you know, there's no issue with that. So you don't need to use Google Docs, I mean, we already occasionally receive Google Docs from some outside people. My, it's always a fair time, but, um, but you don't have to use them, you can continue to use, you know, Word or whatever you use. It's just that the, you know, systems that are separate, you know. So you should have all received our password on here, so you can set it up. And if you cannot, you have another option. For the ceremony, we said.
Be with the text, do you?
Yeah, yeah, he texts it. Yeah.
Even not.
Right.
Well, I hope I received some good tutoring, because I'm gonna need it. It's for sure, uh, I hope also I'll be able to be particularly present in two weeks, but that's still up in the air. I have some interesting medical issues. Is there, if, uh, any other business we have to vote on, because I'm gonna have to sign off in a minute?
No, I, I think that's it, Peter, um, I think we're finished.
Well, thank you. Have a nice evening, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
The really, the only thing that changes is now we've got to check.
Right, right, and.
You have a quick wash up.
He doesn't really know how to use his email.
Clearly. I did give you a chat.
So, so when, when you receive, you know, when you receive things from Chip, for instance, it'll be to this new account, instead of your personal. And if you, um, well, if you send a reply, that's easy enough, because it's gonna, you know, it's just gonna go back to you.
Change it.
So right, you'll have, you'll have a email address, such as a refill address, refill, maybe not work at.
Yes.
Not move, yeah. So, so that's it, we can, we can talk about it some more the next meeting.
Perhaps we need the bots and systems and people. But I would be able to shut up the email. I don't I don't, I have two things open all the time now, because I haven't had a shot, one for both, one for the other, so. I'm really.
Perhaps that's what they need to put.
Yeah.
Otherwise, a lot of this.
Yeah, I'm gonna talk to Dana some more about what it is.
The issue.
These loyal hosts and allies. I think there are, you know, certain basic things like that that might be helpful. And I'm not sure, um, uh, to what extent it's still a basic.
You have to set up. We're gonna use this, we just gotta try to break.
Yeah, I actually already did.
Maybe past the change. From what he already gave me? Definitely, yeah, that. I will try. I'm pretty sure that possible, we all know it's possible.
They'll.
Right, yeah.
It's all clear.